Very few of us go very far in our day before encountering the invisible hand of artificial intelligence prompting us to buy this or that, to turn right up ahead, reminding us of an impending appointment and so forth. Beyond that presence, we're continually exposed to claims about what such tools may do in the future. So we want to take a look in this brief conversation about what we mean by artificial intelligence. What are the more reasonable expectations for future achievements in artificial intelligence? And what might be perils, the perils of such tools? This is a huge subject, and I have the pleasure of scratching the surface of this very big subject with two renowned thinkers, two friends and colleagues. First of all, John Lennox, Professor Emeritus of Mathematics and the History of Science at Oxford University, Regents Professor of Physics Paul Davies of Arizona State University, who is also the Director of Beyond the Center for Fundamental Concepts in Science. I'm Barry Ritchie. I'm a professor of physics in the Department of Physics at Arizona State University, ASU, and an affiliated faculty member with ASU's Center for the Study of Religion and Conflict. I have turned off my Alexa, so I think that we can speak comfortably, gentlemen. And so to begin with, John, in your most recent book, 2084: Artificial Intelligence and the Future of Humanity, you distinguish between artificial intelligence and artificial general intelligence. What's the difference there? What's the difference that you're trying to draw out?
Well, thanks, Barry. I'm really delighted to be associated with ASU today. I think it's probably easiest to say that AI has been defined as the theory and development of computer systems that can perform tasks that normally require human intelligence, such as those you mentioned, visual perception, speech recognition, and so on. A narrow AI, which covers probably most of the AI that's up and running today, typically involves doing one thing that normally takes human intelligence and of course does it much more efficiently. Whereas artificial general intelligence is the concept of creating a system that can do everything, or mostly everything a human can do, but much more, much faster. And therefore, within that concept is the attempt to, in the end, produce what one might call a superintelligence in two, one of two distinct ways. One is the idea of enhancing existing humans by adding technology, and the other is post-biological, building an AGI system on a silicon base or similar. So those are the two different things.
All right. Now, where would you say we are in those two projects that you've described? Would you say that one is a pipe dream and the other is reality? Or how would you characterize it, John?
Well, I would say that the first one is very much a reality, and we're all aware of it every day. And because it's a reality, I think that, well, all technology I liken to a knife, a really sharp knife, you can use it for surgery, or you could use it for murdering people. That is, it raises ethical problems. And it's powering ahead at a fantastic rate. And some of the things that are being done are really quite spectacular. I think one of the most recent is the way in which Deep Mind has been able to calculate protein folding of thousands and thousands of proteins. That is something absolutely spectacular, and we may expect more of the same. Now, AGI tends to be mainly the stuff of science fiction. But of course, we have to wait and see just where narrow AI is going. And as it broadens out, I would expect that the technologies become much more than doing one single thing. But science fiction writers love AGI.
Okay. So, science fiction writers certainly have some very high hopes for AGI. And now, Paul, in your just finished book, What's Eating the Universe and Other Cosmic Questions, you said, and I'll quote here, so forgive me for reading this, "On Earth, designed intelligence, usually called artificial intelligence or AI, is already penetrating many areas of human activity. It can do mathematics better than we can, and increasingly make decisions about complex systems. It is easy to imagine that in a few decades, most of the intellectual heavy lifting on Earth will be done by AI that will likely far outstrip the human brain and capability." So, Paul, could you elaborate on that view and set it in its context?
Well, let me look back over my lifetime. And when I was a student, I loved to read the science fiction. I can remember reading I, Robot by Isaac Asimov. And I thought all of this stuff was just around the corner, much as we thought after watching 2000 and 1000 Space Odyssey that we'd have cities on the moon by the year 2000. And it was a very disappointing few decades when it looked like robotics and what we now call AI were really going nowhere, that it had been greatly overblown. But then suddenly, I think in the last 20 years, it all seemed to come together, and there were huge advances. I even remember a meeting at Google where, not so many years ago, where a friend of mine suggested that they should put more effort into devices that would translate languages. So if you go to a restaurant in China, you could speak in English and the waiter would see it in Chinese. This has happened. So enormous advances. But I think, in the context of what we're trying to achieve at this meeting, that we're less concerned with the sort of gee whizery. It's obvious that amazing things can be done and done very efficiently and better than human beings. But the intelligence is, I think, the second issue. I think what we're all more concerned about is consciousness, something like that, self-awareness, moral direction, and so forth. In other words, we're not terribly much frightened by a system that flies a plane better than, or even drives a car better than a human being, once we get used to it. But when we get into the area of simulating not just intelligence, but making the claim that we can build a system that is conscious, is in some sense a being, and may or may not have some sort of moral awareness, then that starts to get much more scary. And if we then go to even further in the future to the notion that such beings might displace humans, so we would be sort of irrelevant, then that raises huge numbers of questions. So I think intelligence is not really the right thing to dwell on. It is really more aspects of consciousness, self-awareness, moral values, and so forth.
Well, just to follow up on that, Paul, do you consider, is consciousness just a form of computation then? Or is it something not just quantitatively, but qualitatively different than calculation?
There's a deep philosophical problem, which is of course well-known, which is how do we know if something is conscious? And people have arguments, you know, is my dog conscious? And most dog owners think that their dogs are conscious. And then if you had a sort of robotic dog that responded in the same way, could you attribute consciousness to it? Well, Alan Turing, one of the founders of this entire discipline, came up with this notion of the Turing Test. So, am I talking to Barry, a real conscious human being? Or is this some sort of simulation that is responding appropriately, but without any awareness of what it is doing? And how can I tell the difference? If you can, if you can design a system that can respond appropriately in a way that's indistinguishable from another human being, then according to the Turing Test, you would attribute consciousness to it. But it is just by analogy. I know I am conscious. You behave in a manner similar to me, and so I attribute consciousness to you. But it's really only a working hypothesis. I cannot know you are conscious without being you, and then of course I wouldn't be me. So this is deep philosophical problem's always been there of attributing consciousness to something else. And I think probably most people would go on the basis of familiarity, that if you had a robot or something like that around that was so well-designed that it responded appropriately, you would treat it as if it's conscious. But whether it really is, it's called the hard problem of consciousness, whether you can really say it is conscious, it's a problem that I'm not sure we will ever solve. It may be beyond the scope of science to actually solve it.
Okay. So, John, you want to jump in here? What's your view? Do you feel, well, let's talk about the question of consciousness first of all. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm conscious that there's a problem. And my first reaction is I'm interested in Paul's emphasis here, because I've just been listening to the Reth lectures, which are a famous series of lectures. And this year, they were, or last year, December, they were given by Stuart Russell. And one of the things I picked up from what he said was that he was involved in the following project. Here's how he put it. He said, "We are interested in creating programs that behave intelligently. The additional project of making them conscious is not one that we are equipped to take on, nor one whose success we would be able to determine." And he traces his stance to Turing himself, who did admit that there was a mystery to consciousness, but he didn't think it was necessary to solve it, to construct an AI system. Now, it seems to me, thinking about this, that just as AI simulates intelligence without actually being intelligent. I love the paper of a pioneer, he's in his 90s now. I met a man called Meli Champ at the University of Alabama. He wrote a paper with the title, "The Artificial in Artificial Intelligence is Real." In other words, he's pointing out that we mustn't forget it's not actually intelligent. So I do see a real difference in simulation and actuality. And I take Paul's point, that it's very difficult with the Turing Test to tell the difference. But one of the big problems, as I understand it, reading unconscious studies, is we still have no idea what consciousness actually is. So that seems to me to be a massive barrier. So that means that, Paul mentioned the ethical problems and the scariness of this, and I agree with that absolutely entirely. But what we need to do in the meantime is that any ethical dimension to the systems we have so far has to be programmed in by human operators. And so their ethics, their worldview is going to be built in. So the major quest is what worldview are we building into these machines, whether they're actually espousing it or whether they're simply simulating it?
Yeah. Could I, could I jump in there?
Yes, please do.
Because I absolutely agree with John. So the first step is, is there a universal set of values we agree across the world that we would build in at this level? That's, that's a hard enough problem. But even if there is, then the difficulty, the real risk that I see with unleashing AI with no controls, is that very soon, the first generation of AIs, if we can call them that, are going to design the next generation, the next generation, and so on. Because of our feeble brains, we will lose track of exactly what these design principles are. We would just marvel at the products that these AIs produce. And then we can imagine, you know, N generations of these AIs, the descendants of the descendants of descendants into the far, far future. If we embed a system of values at the first level, there's absolutely no guarantee that that system of values will be there in a thousand generations' time, when they've redesigned themselves. And because there's nothing, unlike humans, we can't sort of plug ourselves together and achieve a collective intellect, these systems can. They can cover a whole planet, some sort of superbrain. And the mind boggles, to use a term, as to the capabilities, but also the values of what a system like that might be. And you might think, well, this is so far in the future, who cares? But the one time that I have been brought up against this, and other people who dabble in SETI, the Search for Extraterrestrial Intelligence, is, you know, supposing we do, supposing we are not alone in the universe, and there are other civilizations out there, and we are contacting such a civilization, extraterrestrial intelligence, what will it be like? And I think we've come to the overwhelming conclusion, that it would be post-biological, and that it might be, have this sort of super intellect and with a system of values. And even if there is a common system of values, not just across the planet, but across the universe, is there any guarantee that what we'd be dealing with would see eye to eye to us with us on anything? And so that's, that is the sort of scary aspect of SETI and extrapolating into the far, far future.
Well, in extrapolating there, Paul, maybe we take a step back, and because in talking about artificial intelligence, designing artificial intelligence, there's a goal, a telos there that I'd like to step back from. Let's just go back to what you said in your book for a second. You said that AI can do mathematics better than we can. Now, exactly what did you mean there? Because most of us consider mathematics a, not necessarily a plug and chug type of endeavor, that there is creativity and originality and so forth. So when you say that artificial intelligence can do mathematics better than we can, what exactly did you mean by that? It certainly can, can do basic math, you know, it can certainly do sums a whole lot faster than we can. But I don't think that's what you meant.
Well, maybe I should have said better than I can, but maybe not better than John. Of course, when I first started using computers, they were just known as, you know, really stupid calculating machines, which is very fast, but no idea what they were doing. And indeed, back in the, in the 70s, it was almost impossible to get computers to do anything other than just sort of basic arithmetic and statistics. But then they became better and better. Packages like Mathematica and so on enabled people to do not just algebra, but calculus and fairly advanced computations. And I think it's got to the point now where, where mostly, I don't make a lot of use of this, but I have students who do, mostly, I would feel that, that using a computer was the way to go. But of course, what, what I think you're referring to is with the creativity is new mathematics. And mathematicians, of course, all the time are coming up with new, new concepts, defining new mathematical objects and relationships. And it's an infinite universe of possibilities. Mathematics is open-ended, and human beings have a wonderful creative ability to find new and interesting aspects of mathematics that I think probably computers at the moment don't have. So as a, as a creative activity, almost an artistic activity, I think humans still have the edge. But there's some other area which disturbs me a little bit, and I think it disturbs a lot of mathematicians, which is coming up with mathematical proofs. So there's some famous unsolved problems. I think people know, for example, about Fermat's Last Theorem, what I know is solved. But there are a number of these. And the question is, if you get a computer to work on one of these things, and it says there, I proved it, and you look through what the computer has done, and it really means nothing to us, how do we know? How can we tell what's, what's happened? And this, this was done many years ago with the four-color problem, this famous problem that on a map, what is the minimum number of colors you need? So no two countries, adjacent countries have the same color, whatever their shapes and so on. And it turns out it's four, it's always supposed to be four. And a computer proved it, but I, you know, I'm not, I'm not aware that any human being has sort of gone through and said, yes, well, the computer got it right. We never thought of doing it that way. So that, that leads us into this whole territory of what, you know, do we just trust computers, even though we don't know what's going on in their mighty heads? Or do we somehow feel that things will only ever be fully understood if a human being, and in particular mathematician, can look through and have that aha moment, as Roger Penrose described it so well, that sort of, everything falls into place, now I see it. Might be a very counterintuitive result, but aha, that's, that's the proof. I can see how all this works. Maybe this will no longer, this will be a thing of the past.
So, so John, you have a dog in this fight, because as a mathematician, how would you respond to Paul's comments there?
Well, I found Paul's comment really very interesting. And certainly, looking back, computers were a great tool. And then when the four-color problem was solved, in quotations, it raised a storm of discussion as to whether this is valid kind of proof and so on and so forth. But what I thought he meant was that he was referring to something relatively recent. And that is the way in which AI has actually been able to suggest some very deep connections to mathematicians, which they have then gone on to prove. And it's only a month ago that Nature published an article describing how Google's Deep Mind was set the task of discerning patterns and connections in the mathematical fields of knot theory and representation theory. And to the surprise of the mathematicians involved, new connections were suggested, and they were able then to examine the connections and prove the conjecture that AI suggested. And these kind of results are suggesting increasingly that machine learning can complement mathematical research and guide intuition. And here in the University of Oxford, using machine learning identified patterns, mathematicians have discovered a connection between algebraic and geometric invariance of knots and established a completely new theorem in the field. Whereas a group working with them in the University of Sydney used the connections made by the AI to get them much closer to proving a conjecture about polynomials, which has been on the books for 40 years. So this seems to be almost a qualitative change in the capacity to use AI. But you're not getting rid of the mathematicians that fast. Their intuition is necessary to make those connections. But what to my mind would be very fascinating, and I just go back to what Paul was saying, it would be very interesting to see something like Deep Mind solve Fermat's Last Theorem ab initio. That would, that would be a very interesting thing to see if that could be done. So I think we still need the mathematicians, although of course, the AI systems are working much faster. But you need the mathematical intuition to get the aha moment, I see the connection, here it is.
Okay. But, but to take Paul's point a little bit further, you said that the, that the software, the, the computers had identified connections. Isn't that doing mathematics, identifying connections?
No. What, what, well, it is of course doing mathematics. The computer is doing mathematics every bit as much, I think, as in earlier days, when I first saw a computer in Cambridge, a vast thing that filled a room, and it did a little bit of numerical analysis for me. So I constructed a program by punching holes in cards and all this kind of thing. And that reminds me that I remember thinking, I ought to go into computing. And I approached my tutor at college, and he said, "Mr. Lennox, I really thought that you would be interested in being a serious mathematician. Computers are not for you." I could have been in at the foundations, but there you are, you see?
See, so, so since the computers didn't have pride...
The computers didn't have...
...to your tutor's argument here.
That's right.
Yes. So we're about halfway through the time we have. So I wanted to, to essentially pick up a thread that both of you have brought up, and I'd like to spend a little time talking about that. John, since we were talking, let me start with you. John, what do you see as the greatest peril arriving, arising in the advance of artificial intelligence or artificial general intelligence? And just to keep the scope somewhat on the real plane, let's say within the next 60 years. So that would take us roughly to the time, roughly to 2084. And, and I know that that type of extrapolation is already pretty, pretty rickety. I recall Ray Perzfile's plot where he showed how we would get greater and greater computational power, so that sometime, I think it was 2008, we would be able to have the consciousness of a mosquito. And I want my mosquito, right? I, I want to know what it feels like to be a mosquito. Well, that hasn't happened yet. So, but in the next 60 years, John, what do you see as the greatest peril arising in the advance of artificial intelligence?
Well, my first reaction is to define what I would call the singularity constant. That is, the singularity is always at least 30 years in the future. But coming seriously to your question, I don't think you need to go 60 years into the future, because narrow AI is raising huge problems. Let's just take one area, and that is facial or bodily movement recognition. That can be used to detect criminals in a crowd, and police forces are using it. But we know in our world today that it can be also used as surveillance technology to suppress an ethnic minority and create huge problems for, for groups of people. So we're already there in the scary side of narrow AI. Now, I'm well aware that people like the late Stephen Hawking, they were scared. He said, "The real risk with AI is not malice, but competence. A super-intelligent AI will be extremely good at accomplishing its goals, and if those goals aren't aligned with ours, we're in trouble." But I really feel that the problem that's faced at the moment is that the technology is outpacing the ethics at a colossal speed. And that the business of building ethical norms into systems, the arms race, of course, is a particular example, with autonomous weapons and all this kind of stuff, which we could come on to. But I'm concerned at the moment with what we observe, even with the simplest of things, the fact that my shopping leaves a digital trail. And there's a thing that has been called surveillance capitalism. There's a fascinating book by a woman called Shoshana Juboff of MIT, and it's a very serious book, pointing out that what's happening, partly with our permission, because we wear the digital technologies in our smartphones. But the information that's being harvested without our permission is being sold on, and billions are being made from that kind of thing. That raises massive problems of the intrusion of privacy and so on. So the next 60 years seem to be to, going to be, make that a great deal worse unless we find some way of policing this thing, of somehow controlling it. And that is a major problem that people are beginning to realize. And you'll find there are several efforts where you get many leading thinkers in artificial intelligence signing documents and saying, "We've got to develop ethical principles," like for example, the Asilomar Principles for, for AI. So that's where the problem lies.
So, so Paul, do you agree that John's put his finger on the greatest peril there? Or do you think there's another more significant than that?
Well, I started out by giving this sort of grandiose, million-year view of multi-generational AIs as the long-term worry, but in the short term, because we're a long way from that. And Frank Wilczek has remarked in connection with this subject that he's less concerned about artificial intelligence than about human stupidity. And I think what John is referring to in this intermediate phase is where we have a combination of both. So we have the power of artificial intelligence to do the bidding of, in some cases, bad actors. So they have at their disposal this enormous technology. And... And surveillance is, of course, one that that I deeply share anxieties about, because in many cases, we're throwing away the very rights and privileges that our forbears fought for, and they've all been tossed away just within a decade or two, sometimes on just rather trivial grounds, grounds of convenience, for example. So that that is obviously a worry. But one of the things John alludes to in his book, but if you make a comparison, say, he mentioned about the knife, of course, a good example. More contemporary example is nuclear power. We, I wouldn't be talking to you now, incidentally, if it wasn't for the nuclear power station here in Arizona, which is providing at least some of the electricity that we're using. But we don't worry too much about, you know, a crazy student in Belarus or something making a nuclear bomb in his in his bedroom. But when it comes to AI and computer hacking and access to the enormous computational power that is networked around the world, we can imagine a crazy student unleashing something quite terrible. And of course, it has happened with just simple malware and so forth. But it could go easily go well beyond this, that if you can harness the disability by hacking into it, then that seems to me to to present all sorts of dangers. So we really are in unknown territory, and we don't know how to regulate it. I don't know what the institutions might be that would regulate it.
Yeah, I think the 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 mental picture that you were drawing there, too, human stupidity may simply be human curiosity. It's like placing a loaded gun in a kindergarten, you know, the kids are going to pick it up. And just out of curiosity, and so it may not actually be with malevolent intent. It may simply be the that curiosity gets the better of the human race. So the the advance of AI seems to be unstoppable. So how can we possibly avoid the perils that you two have had discussed here? What sources or source of values or virtues are available to backstop humanity from from falling prey to those perils? And, you know, I think a couple of times the phrase universal values has been been vocalized here. What values and virtues are universally shared among cultures? I mean, I think I live in a culture where it's not clear that that we have shared values and virtues any longer. So so let's go back to the initial question. John, let me start with you. How do you think we can possibly avoid the peril, the perils that we've been talking about here?
Well, this is a huge problem. But the question of universal values is the first thing, I think, to address. Now, cultures clearly differ in many ways, but they don't differ as much as as all that. What I mean by that is this, years ago, I think it was 1940, C.S. Lewis wrote a prescient book, really, called The Abolition of Man. It's got an appendix. And in the appendix, he traced through all the world's major religions, philosophies and cultures, and discovered that there was a set of common values. And it's quite remarkable. I remember coming across it as a teenager. He called these illustrations of natural law. And in particular, he found that every civilization, every religion, every culture, even Roman pagan religion, humanism, all the rest, all had what we now often call the golden rule. Do unto others as you would they did unto you. So that's there. And from where I sit, I reckon that because that appears to be hardwired into every human being, then society doesn't completely fall apart. You mentioned the word backstop, and it seems to me that we need to remind ourselves of these values, and they seem to be, in that sense, pretty absolute. I often say to people, what about torturing babies? Is that wrong? And people think it's absolutely wrong. So there's one absolute for a start. We can start there. The problem, it seems to me, is not so much recognizing that there's a common base on which we operate. The problem is compliance, as many companies these days have discovered. How do you get the mission statement, the ethical mission statement of a company into the hearts of its executives? That's that's one of the problems. And it seems to me here that you have several different ways of grounding those values. And I think in thinking about it, we need to distinguish between the values that exist and the arguments people use to ground them. And there are basically three. First of all, that universal objective values are grounded in the matter of the universe and have simply preceded by the laws of nature, et cetera, et cetera. And then others believe that values are creations of human beings. And then there finally is the position that I take, that they're grounded in the character of God, the Creator. So there's those three grounds, but it seems to me that the justification for absolute moral values is distinct from their existence. And the problem of, if you like, enforcing them, although maybe that's not the right word, is this. The dominant ethical system, and there are several ethical systems in our world, is preference utilitarianism, which roughly says, you argue in the maximum benefit for the maximum number of people. It's a consequentialist ethic. And that works really well if there are equal centers of powers on the planet. If you're dividing ice cream among kids, you'd better use utilitarianism and give them exactly the same amount, or you're in trouble. But the problem is that we live in a planet where the centers of power, particularly in this area, are not equal. And the difficulty is, if I have enough power that I don't care what you do to me, you say to me, look, if you do X, I will, and I'd say, yes, you will what? And this is exemplified in Hitler's day. In his political infancy, he drew up treaties. The moment he got the power, he tore them up. And I think that's a huge problem that that we face today. And I don't know the answer to it at all, not really.
Okay, so so Paul, you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, a couple of points that I want to make. So one is, even before we hit these sort of really major issues about global values, there are AI specialists who wrestle with dilemmas. A famous one, and I'll sort of paraphrase it, but, you know, self driving car, does it swerve to avoid a mother with a baby in a stroller and hit an old person on the sidewalk, you know, as a sort of, it's a better outcome? Do we we tend to sort of attach more value to young lives because their life expectancy is greater? And that that's, I don't know what what I would do in those circumstances, but these people have to program those things in. We've hit it a very practical way in the COVID era, because people are saying, some people are saying, well, most of the people who are dying are going to die soon anyway, and why should the rest of us suffer health consequences and economic disruption, you know, to save the lives of some old people? And other people say, an old person's life is worth just the same as a young person's life. I'm not I'm not going to get drawn into into what I believe on this. But but the thing is, we have difficulty already deciding. Now, I'm sure, I certainly know there is in Britain, there are algorithms to sort of work out how you allocate resources among people. And you have to build some sort of ethical standards into those algorithms. So we hit these things in a very practical way already. And and I think there will be disagreements. There are disagreements between the UK and the US on the nature of those those algorithms. So this is a very difficult one, but let me also make another comment, which occurred to me as John was speaking, you know, what what would it take to get some sort of global regulation? And maybe what it takes is some really horrible accident or incident. And I'm thinking that we've had decades where the nuclear threat has always been there. But but so far, we've avoided it. And the demonstration of the horror of nuclear weapons in Japan at the end of World War Two, you know, maybe it was necessary. If that hadn't happened, then nuclear war may well have broken out in the 50s and so on. So maybe it requires one really nasty thing to happen. In the case of AI, it would be some sort of calamity, national calamity, which we would survive, but we thought, never again. So we want to reach that sort of never again moment. And maybe, I'm afraid to say, maybe that's the only way we're ever going to get to some sort of global control.
I think that's a very prescient comment. I mean, I think the the key, perhaps, is, you mentioned the the threat of nuclear annihilation. Even though the powers, the world powers at that time were adversaries, they all recognized the existential danger presented by their tools and pulled back from the brink. It may be that what it's going to take is some real understanding of the existential threat, represented by artificial intelligence unconstrained by morality, unconstrained by nationality and things like that. I mean, we, as one of the examples that John presented earlier, was of a was at the use of of artificial intelligence to oppress minorities. There you have the state wielding the power. But maybe if the leaders of that state recognize that the pendulum can swing back the other way, they would recognize with the rest of the world's leaders that this is an existential threat for human life as we know it on the planet and be more eager to step forward to do something about it. John, do you have a further comment or?
Well, I listened to the Reth lectures, and Stuart Russell said an interesting thing at the end of the second one. He said, there are eight billion people wondering why you cannot give them some protection against being hunted down and killed by robots. If the technical issues are too complicated, your children can probably explain them to you. And what he's referring to is this whole question of automatic weapons and in particular swarms of drones. And I could imagine, thinking of Paul's scenario of something absolutely awful happening, we could have a catastrophe where many civilians are killed by one of these coordinated AI directed swarms of killer drones. And then we might get something like the shock of saying, never again. It must never happen again. And I think it's right to look back over history and realize that there was some success in terms of nuclear banning and so on. We haven't blown the planet up yet. We've held back. And there were was a group of scientists at the time in some of these areas. They stopped working on these things. And I found it very interesting that in Google, in particular, coming up to the modern day, working on some of these automatic weapon things, I think it was Google, the scientists actually refused to do any more research and left. So personal protest is important. You know, I can't solve all the world's global problems, but it seems to me that each of us has a responsibility to see what role we can play in this. And I myself think it's very important to folk like Paul, who stand very high in this kind of field and area with the kind of attitudes that he is able to share. And I think that that's absolutely marvelous to see. And it's hugely important, we have people of integrity having input. And perhaps that can have influence. But for each of us, and for me personally, it seems to me that questioning the whole basis of moral values and and what our worldview is, that's important. Because if I change and you change, and that brings us closer to one another, then it brings us in common towards a much more balanced sense of coexistence.
Okay, and well, with that hopeful comment, I think we're going to have to bring our discussion to a close. We've raced right through the 45 minutes. I feel like we're seeing the racers come around the last stretch, but now we're going to cut to a commercial. So I do appreciate the fact, John and Paul, that you've allowed me to participate in this discussion. It's been a very thought provoking, and again, I hope ultimately hopeful discussion about how we may think about these issues. You've certainly given us much to think about. To those of you who are listening to this conversation and have become intrigued by the issues that we've discussed briefly here, I really hope that you will follow up and read both Professor Lennox's new book, 2084: Artificial Intelligence and the Future of Humanity, and Professor Davies' new book, What's Eating the Universe and Other Cosmic Questions, to get further insight into the questions we've explored here and more. So thank you for joining us, and thank you once again, John and Paul.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
It's been my pleasure. Lovely to do it with you, Paul.